If I could ask everyone to please take your seats, we will get started this evening. Welcome to the Gilbert Town Council meeting for October 24th, 2023. I will call this meeting to order as a reminder to please turn off or silence your cellphones and devices. I look at Councilmember Torgerson. It's a thing, you guys, it's okay. The first thing I'd like to do is invite Amy Keller down to offer the invocation for this evening, and Amy, thank you for pitch hitting with about an hour's notice, we very much appreciate you.
Our Father in Heaven, we come before thee tonight with gratitude in our hearts for the many blessings that thou hast given us. We thank thee for our rights and our freedoms and the many opportunities that we enjoy in this country. And Father, we thank thee for the men and women that serve in our military and as our first responders who frequently risk their lives to protect us and to maintain law and order. We ask thee to please watch over and bless them and strengthen them. Father, we thank thee for our elected officials and our civic leaders, many of whom are here tonight, who have a great desire to improve our community and who often serve without much compensation or thanks. We thank thee for our educators and pray that they will be sustained in this important role as they strive to teach the children in our community. We pray for families in our community that they may be strengthened, that we may have more love and understanding in our homes. Father, we know that there is much conflict in our society and in our world, and we pray that our hearts may be softened, that people will be more willing to listen to one another and to compromise when needed, and that we might have more peace in this world. We are mindful of all those who are suffering, and we pray for those who labor on their behalf. We pray that we will take every opportunity to come together and to alleviate suffering, and especially in this holiday season, that our hearts will be more generous, that we will be willing to share all that thou hast given us, both our material resources and our time and our talents. And above all, we pray that we might love one another as thou hast loved us, and we say these things in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you, Amy. Amy is a member of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, and we very much appreciate her, and nobody picked up on the fact that I said pitch hitting, I used a baseball term since the Diamondbacks in game seven. Just saying. Now we will have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Cub Scouts PAC 522 WeBelOast, and if you'll come down to the front, and Kirsten will assist you. Please stand, everyone.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All of us? Can everyone please join us? I also gave a gift to the scouts, which was a pocket constitution as a gift from the mayor and council, and I did a little half-hour Q and A with them before our first meeting at 5:00, I think I was with them. It's hard to keep track of it all. But we thank them for coming out and participating this evening. Now, I would like to ask Town Clerk Herrera if she would please conduct the roll call.
Mayor Bridget Peterson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Kathy Tilke?
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Chuck Bon Giovanni?
Here.
Councilmember Bobby Buckley?
Here.
Councilmember Young Kaprowski?
Here.
And Councilmember Jim Torgerson, a quorum is present.
Thank you, Chevelli. The first item on our agenda this evening is proclamation declaring October 22nd to October 28th, 2023 as Native American Internship Management Week. It's NAMI to us, it is a program that we run here at the town. I will be headed down to present to Melanie Dykstra, any NAMI participants and grads, and any tribal leaders that might be here in attendance. Native American Management Internship Week, whereas the Native American Management Internship Program engages motivated and driven students aspiring to influence change within a tribal community, and whereas NAMI interns develop and elevate their strategic thinking, problem-solving, and communication skills as they work on executive-level research projects, complete public speaking presentations, and whereas Gilbert recognizes the value in preparing students for successful lives with real-world, hands-on experiences, and congratulates and thanks the 36 interns who've completed 52 internships over the last 10 years. And whereas this year, Gilbert celebrates a 10-year partnership with the Salt River Pima Miracopa Indian Community, who since 2013 have financially supported the internship program through 12% gaming grant funding. And whereas Gilbert recognizes and appreciates the Fort McDowell Yavapai Nation and Gila River Indian Community, who have also financially supported the internship program through the 12% gaming grant funding. And whereas Gilbert's commitment to this program ensures that not only is a professional municipal learning experience for indigenous interns provided, but also that Gilbert's employees learn and understand local tribal culture and customs. And now therefore I, Bridget Peterson, mayor of the town of Gilbert, do hereby recognize the week of October 22nd through 28th, 2023 as Native American Management Internship Week in Gilbert, Arizona, and thank the interns for their commitment to the NAMI program, the local tribes for their continued support, and the staff for their dedication to this invaluable program. Congratulations. So I'd like you all to introduce yourselves, and for our NAMI interns, if you could tell us what tribe you're with and what years you went through the program here at the town of Gilbert, and I'm going to start with you, Leah, and maybe just a couple words on the program and how you started it.
Thank you, Mayor. Leah Reinheimer, Assistant Town Manager, started the program in 2013 in recognition of Gilbert's desire to build authentic, meaningful, and long-term relationships with the tribal nations and communities in Arizona, and how we could learn from that and offer in exchange an internship opportunity to promote both our cultural growth as well as provide learning opportunity for the interns.
I'm Melanie Dykstra, I'm the Volunteering Community Resources Manager, and I get to come along on this program, and I do a lot of logistics, but really, it's the best part of my job where I get to work with all of these wonderful folks, and we've had great learning experiences and lots of fun, and it's really fun every single time we get some new ones in the door.
Hello, I'm Crystal Franco, I'm Yaki in Chiricahua Apache, and I now reside in Ajo, Arizona, and work for the International Sonoran Desert Alliance.
Hi, my name is Kirsten Begay, and I'm a member of the Navajo Nation, and I am currently a management analyst with the town of Gilbert.
Hi, everyone, my name is Letitia Gilmore, I did the NAMI internship in the summer of 2022, I'm a member of the Navajo Nation, and I currently work for the city of Chandler.
Hello, everybody, my name is Burke Wheeler, I was an intern here in fall of 2013, I believe, and I'm from the Navajo Nation, and I'm a policy analyst for the Bureau of Land Management.
Yatay, hello, my name is Octavia Freeland, I'm from the Navajo Nation, and I'm a current NAMI intern.
Yatay, my name is Tashina Mashane, I interned in, I believe, 2018, 2019, I'm from the Navajo Nation, and I'm currently the Grants Coordinator for the American Indian Health Area Health Education Center.
Yatay, hello, everyone, my name is Aiden Klytis, I am a current NAMI intern with Octavia, and I am a recent graduate from Arizona State University.
Some impressive young ladies here, we do have men in this program, too, they just couldn't be here this evening, but these are some very impressive young ladies, and I've worked with a few of them over the years, and they have really gone off to do some great things within our local community, so congratulations for that. Let's get a photo together, who wants to hold this? Who's here, somebody else is here?
We do.
Okay.
Tylesha.
Oh, Tylesha, I can't see that far away. Tylesha, I'm going to put you on the spot, just to have you introduce yourself, and tell us what tribe you're with and what you're doing now, and if you remember what years you went through our program.
Okay. Hi, good evening, everybody, I don't know where to stand. Hello, my name's Tylesha Yellowhair, I actually was a NAMI intern here between 2018 and 2019. I worked on one of the biggest projects of my life, and without it, because of it, I was able to define where I wanted to do with my career, so I worked with the Family Violence Unit, interviewed some data, that was able to help them be able to collect data and see data in faster time, so because of that, I found my passion for social work. And so, in 2019, I ended up graduating with my bachelor's in American Indian Studies, and then from there, I applied for a dual master's degree at Arizona State University, and I graduated with my master's in social work in 2021, and then I graduated with my master's in public administration in December, just this past December in 2022. And, yeah, and now I work as a senior behavioral health counselor, I'm a child's therapist, I now work directly with native women and children, and I help prevent removal of children from their homes. Yeah.
Just to take a photo. Okay, I'm going to have four of you go on that side, you tried, Melanie, you tried. She's going to try and balance this up, right? Is that right? Yeah. Have you sketched out a bit so that everybody has their space? There you go. All right, we're going to do the promenade. There we go. Are you ready? One, two, three. Thank you, Amy. Thank you. Congratulations, thank you. Next, we have a proclamation for Alzheimer's and Caregiver Month, and if Councilmembers Bon Giovanni and Councilmember Kaprowski come on down. They will be presenting to Steve and Amy Adams and the Gilbert Alzheimer's Association and advocates, if you'd all come down and join us in the front.
Thank you. Where's mine?
Can't you tell?
You know. Oh, my God, you're right, thank you. That was small. Hey, buddy.
Evening, everybody, this one means a lot to me. Steve and Amy have been dear friends for a number of years, and so with that, I have the honor to give the proclamation for Alzheimer's and Caregiver Month. Whereas Alzheimer's-related dementia significantly impacts the health and well-being of residents, and whereas more than 150,000 Arizonans over the year 65, or possibly 1 in 10, suffer from Alzheimer's or dementia-related diseases, which is why awareness is critically important.
And whereas in 2022, more than 261,000 Arizonans provided 511 million hours in unpaid care to their loved ones living with Alzheimer's and related dementia. And whereas the town of Gilbert recognizes the importance of Alzheimer's and related dementia care and supports all efforts to educate and support those affected and afflicted by Alzheimer's and related dementia. And whereas Arizonans are actively engaged in education of the disease, advocating for the proper continuum of care and improve the training and care of patients with Alzheimer's disease and related dementia. And whereas the Gilbert Water Tower will be lit purple on November 3rd, 2023, in honor of Alzheimer's Awareness Month and Walk to End Alzheimer's. And now therefore I, Chuck Bon Giovanni, for Bridget Peterson, mayor of the town of Gilbert, Arizona, do hereby proclaim November 2023 as Alzheimer's and Caregiver Month in Gilbert, and encourage all residents to learn about Alzheimer's and the related dementia and patient care.
Thank you, Mayor Peterson. Thank you for proclaiming November as Alzheimer's Awareness and Caregivers Month. My wife Amy was diagnosed with early onset Alzheimer's, a form of dementia, seven years ago, thus our commitment to Alzheimer's awareness. We have lived in Gilbert for 25 years and love living here, but then again, who wouldn't? I mean, last year, we were ranked the number one place to live in Arizona by Ranking Arizona. Per the Gilbert Chamber of Commerce, we have been nationally recognized as the most prosperous city in the nation, one of the safest, and the best place to raise a family in Arizona. Gilbert has an abundance of destination parks, restaurants, nightlife, business opportunities to enhance the quality of life for residents and visitors alike. But there is one recognition that's missing, and that is being recognized as a dementia-friendly community. A dementia-friendly community is a village, a town, a city, a county, that is informed, safe, and respectful of individuals living with dementia, their families and caregivers, and provides supportive options that foster quality of life. We are currently building a team made up of town leaders, experts from both the Alzheimer's Association and Banner Alzheimer's, families dealing with the disease such as Amy and I, and leaders from Sun Lakes, the most recently recognized dementia-friendly community in Arizona. I want to give a special shout-out to council members, Chuck and Young. Thank you. And Young, earlier today, I got a call from Marty. Marty Province is the conductor of the Gilbert Symphony Orchestra. Marty informed me that you are instrumental, no pun intended, in making the upcoming concert a dementia-friendly event. That is just very cool, and we thank you. You'll be hearing more about this program over the coming weeks, and thank you again, everyone, for your support, and go D-backs.
Yes. Mayor, you want to come up?
You're my height, you're in front. You're wearing the right color. Oops, sorry. Now I'm feeling left out.
You can always be a part of it.
I'm looking for volunteers.
Can I have you on that side, sorry. Councilwoman Buckley? Sorry, I'm trying to even it.
There we go.
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to make it even. All right, you guys ready? One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I will send you all the photos so you can get them to him, and I'll email you some other photos. Yeah, no worries. Have a good one. Next up, we have a proclamation declaring October 24th, 2023 as Youth Service Day, and Councilmember Kaprowski will be presenting to Joseph Yang and Sasha Revron. Revron?
Whereas Fortis Teen Unity is committed to the betterment of the community and teen leadership development by helping teens gain practical knowledge about their future careers and helping them find their passion and step into their future. And whereas youth volunteer recognition inspires a community, young and old, to get involved in their community. And whereas 29.6% of Gilbert's population is under 18 years old. And whereas a community's youth serves as a vital source of insight and assistance in community projects. And whereas teen students often still find time to come together for their community while juggling their studies, family responsibilities, and preparing for life after high school. And whereas experience in a volunteer capacity assists youth in gaining practical knowledge in the life and in the workforce. Now therefore I, Young Kaprowski, on behalf of mayor of town of Gilbert, hereby dedicate and proclaim October 24th, 2023 as Youth Service Day in Gilbert, Arizona.
Thank you so much, mayor and council, for this proclamation. As she said, and as Councilmember Kaprowski said in the beginning, this is part of Fortis Teen Unity, part of Fortis Femina, I'm going to let our founder and CEO Betty talk about Fortis Femina for just a minute.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Betty Ramirez, and I'm head of the organization, the name is Fortis Femina, and we give you support and mentor women. And we decided three years ago that we're going to take under our wing Fortis Teen. So that's why we have this young generation, because after all, the future of this country is our young generation. Thank you.
Now, with that said, I'd be remiss if we don't also recognize, every year, we like to recognize a teen leader that's been exceptional in the community. So with that said, my name is Joseph Yang, I'm the director of Fortis Teen Unity, as well as the COO of the Chandler Gilbert Asian Festival. I myself, at the age of 12, began serving my local community, I started volunteering at the local library, and through networking and lots of hard work, I'm proud to consider myself a community leader that works hard every day to make this community a better place. It is so important and vital that we recognize and appreciate volunteer service to the community, because the one thing, the most precious thing that anyone can give is their time. Once you give it, there's nothing you can do to ever get that back, which is why your time is the most valuable thing you have. But what's even more commendable is that at such a young age, to give of your time, when we all know that teens are already bogged down with extracurriculars, high school, and trying to maintain a healthy social life, they, healthy social life, for them to give even a little amount of their time, to me, is admirable and commendable. When I was 14, I received the Presidential Volunteer Services Award, so it is a true honor for me now, with the support of mayor and council in the town of Gilbert, to recognize another teen volunteer with the same award that I received, the Presidential Volunteer Services Award, for the third year in a row. It truly is an honor, and I'm going to go ahead and read, I've got too many things in my hands. I'm a good multitasker, I'm not that good, though. "The American story depends not on any one of us, not on some of us, but on all of us. I congratulate you on taking it upon yourself to contribute to the public good, and I'm proud to present you with the President's Gold Volunteer Service Award in recognition of your 330 hours of service to this great nation. Throughout our country's history, the American story has been strengthened by those who combine an optimism about what can be with the resilience to turn that vision into reality. I know I'm not alone in recognizing that those who are willing to step up and volunteer in service of community and country are essential to the ongoing work of forming our more perfect union. By sharing your time and passion, you are helping discover and deliver solutions to the challenges we face, solutions that we need now more than ever. We are living in a moment that calls for hope and light and love. Hope for our futures, light to see our way forward, and love for one another. Through your service, you are providing all three. On behalf of the American people, I extend my heartfelt appreciation to you for your volunteer leadership, and I encourage you to continue to answer the call to serve the country, the country is counting on you." With that said, Gilbert has always been a town of community, helping one another, and kindness, so I'm honored to recognize, oh, and that was a letter from President Biden, sorry, I should have said that. But with that said, I'm honored, thank you, mayor and council, for allowing me to come and do this tonight, and recognize for the third year Sasha Revron, a teen that is exceptional and volunteers in our community, and I'm going to let you say a few words.
Sorry, I have to pull up my speech, too. Okay, good evening, everyone, my name is, as stated, Sasha Revron, I am a high school sophomore at Basis Mesa. I'm very active in my school, I miss Juneteenth of 2023, I participate in many clubs such as Model United Nations, Multicultural Coalition, and student ambassadors, just to name a few. And I'm also an athlete of track and field, and a very active member of my church, Life Link Church. So, to be honest, I am extremely grateful to be receiving this award today, and I've been, I guess to talk about my volunteer work, I've been volunteering at my church since I was nine or 10, and volunteering in my community as well. And from my participation in church, to the participation in the worship team, community outreach days, traveling on mission trips, and to now leading Sunday School children in their lessons for kindergarten to third grade. I feel like volunteering has always been something I've done, but not because it looks good, or gets accolades, or because, because it looks good on a resume, but honestly, because my parents and everyone in my church and who mentors me has taught me that as a Christian, it is one of the most important things to do, is serve, but not just that, to serve with a willing heart. So, I guess the, I'm just here to say that volunteering isn't just about giving our time, it's about giving a piece of our hearts to something greater than ourselves. It connects us to everyone in our community, and it fosters a sense of belonging and shared responsibility, and honestly, it's a chance to make a real, like, tangible difference in our world. So, I'm hoping that this award serves as a symbol of the importance of volunteering to everyone in here, and that it encourages everyone to get involved with our community, roll up your sleeves and get out there and serve, so thank you.
That was a wonderful message, thank you, congratulations, we'll take a photo. Oh, Betty's going to pinner pin on. Oh, just kidding, love you, Betty. Did you look her? That one of those, yes, Sasha one, or something. Yeah. When you input your proclamations? There you go, like, get it all organized, I know, yeah. Is everybody ready? Can you say, sorry? Sasha's cheering section ready?
I think I have a member of the Veterans Advisory Board here, Pamela Rhinesmith, if you could come down and join me. Veterans Week, I'm going to have to have you start printing these larger for me, too. Veterans Week, Veterans Day, November 11th, is an annual holiday to honor and celebrate America's military veterans and began to commemorate the end of World War I hostilities that went into effect on the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month. And whereas annually, November 11th honors America's veterans for their patriotism, love of country, and willingness to serve, and their sacrifice for the common good. And whereas, just as their forefathers did, America has a ready and capable new generation of military members fighting for justice and safeguarding freedom around the globe. And whereas, we honor our veterans with ceremonies the week of November 5th through 11th, 2023, let our actions honor both those who served and those who, whose ultimate sacrifice of their lives ensured our freedoms remain in place. And whereas, the Gilbert Water Tower will be lit red, white, and blue on Saturday, November 11th, 2023, to honor all who have served our country. And whereas, 49 veteran banners purchased by Gilbert residents are being, are hung in Gilbert's Heritage District for Memorial Day and Veterans Day, honoring veterans. And now, therefore, I, Bridget Peterson, Mayor of the Town of Gilbert, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the week of November 5th through 11th, 2023 as Veterans Week. And I encourage Gilbert residents to honor and recognize the heroism, courage, and sacrifice our veterans, and thank them for their service. I invite civic and fraternal organizations, places of worship, schools, businesses, and the media to support this national observance with commemorative expressions and programs. Congratulations and thank you. Thank you for your service, Pamela.
There will also be a veterans' celebration on Thursday, November 9th, starting at...
the Town of Gilbert.
Five o'clock.
Jaclyn Parker, Organizational Development Manager from the People Team, please join
Five o'clock.
But at 3:30, there's a classic car show, if you want to come see that.
me. Oh, hi, Jaclyn.
And that's all being held at Gilbert Regional Park, down at Higley and Queen Creek Roads.
I saw you sitting there. Yes.
I'll give you a microphone. There you go.
Thank you.
If you would like to come down and participate, there will be food trucks and entertainment,
Thank you. Mayor, members of council, I'm really excited to be here to share some recognition.
and there's always a commemorative speaker that always really doesn't leave a dry eye
Here at the Town of Gilbert, oh, thank you, I will need that. Here at the Town of Gilbert, we are committed to our core values, which are driven, kind,
in the place typically. So, please come down and join us, and make sure to honor our veterans for the week of November 5th and 11th.
bold, and humble.
And in Gilbert, we do that every day.
And each year, we provide employees across the entire organization the opportunity to
Thanks, Pamela.
nominate others who exemplify those values. And we do that by them submitting nominations for our MVP, or Most Valuable Player Award, for each of those four values. This year, we had over 100 nominations from employees across the town, and we had a selection committee who anonymously, we anonymized all the information, and the selection committee chose our four winners, which I'm excited to share with you today. We provided, or we presented a special meeting last month in recognition of those four winners, and I'm excited to just share who they are today. Some of them are in attendance, and some of them couldn't make it tonight. But as I call your name, if you'll please come to the front, I'd love to share just the value that you were nominated for and a little tidbit about that. And then we'd love at the end to have a picture with the mayor. Okay. Here are our four winners for driven, kind, bold, and humble. First, we have Ashley Namor, who's not here with us tonight, but she is a project manager, a program manager in our tax compliance office. And she is truly somebody who inspires everyone that she works with and routinely exceeds all the expectations that are set forth before her. Ashley is an incredible addition to Team Gilbert. We also have Kalissa Wilkerson, who's a police officer here at the town and works with our Crisis Response Unit. Kalissa was nominated for the value of kind. And a couple of the things that were shared about Kalissa are that she's really passionate about helping others, and in the work that she does, that's so important. And she also does it without wanting any recognition or personal accolades, even though we're going to give a little bit of that to her tonight. We have Steven Van Zyle, who's with us as well, and he was nominated for our value of bold. Steven works as a fleet supervisor here, helping make sure all those trucks are on the road to provide services to our residents. And Steven is known as a leader with a lot of character. He's forthright with his staff. He's an excellent communicator, and he does everything that he can to help everyone that he serves on his team just be the best that they can be. And lastly, we have Jonathan Blum, who's a fire captain and has worked for Gilbert's Fire Department for quite some time. And Jonathan was nominated for the value of humble. And here's, his peers shared that as a tenured employee here, that John is somebody who works really hard, and I could vouch for that. He's dedicated to his service, to his people, and he's also a lifelong learner. And so we recognize Ashley, Kalissa, Steven, and Jonathan as our four winners for this year's 2023 MVP Award. As they come up to the front, I also just wanted to quickly shout out all of our nominees. We're so proud of them. Some of them are in this room as well, and just continuously provide the stellar service that we want to provide you in our community and to one another as employees here at the Town of Gilbert. Thank you, Mayor. We'd love to have a picture.
Thank you, everyone, for letting us get through those proclamations and presentations. It's always so wonderful to share all the great things that are going on in our community. Now, we will move on to communications from citizens, and I will pass the mic to Vice Mayor Tilke.
Thank you, Mayor. The Gilbert Town Council values citizens' comments and input. Anyone wishing to speak before the council must fill out a request to speak card for each item they wish to speak on, and submit it to the town clerk or place it in the bin provided prior to the start of the meeting. The communications from citizens portion on the agenda provides citizens an opportunity to identify for the town council matters of interest or concern related to town government. Under the provisions of the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the town council is prohibited from responding to issues that have not been properly noticed. Therefore, the town council may only listen to citizens who wish to address them on items. At the conclusion of the open call to public, response is limited to individual members of the council responding to criticism made by those who have addressed the public body, asking staff to review a matter or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. The town asks that when your name is called, you come forward to the podium, state your name and place of residence, and then begin speaking. All speakers are expected to observe common standards of decorum and courtesy. Personal attacks, political speeches, or threats of public action are inappropriate in this forum and may be grounds for ending a speaker's time at the podium. So at this time, I'll call the first speaker up, and then who will be following that speaker? If you'll come forward, the first speaker will need to turn on the mic, which is the button on the bottom. You'll see the red light come on, so you'll know that you'll be ready to go, and you'll have three minutes. First up is Jim Freedom, and following Jim is James Arthur.
Hello, I am Jim Freedom, resident of Earth. I'm an independent reporter for Street News Network. I stand before you today, still waiting on a response of any kind to a public records request I placed on August 15th over two months ago. I didn't even request audio or video, it's just some emails, but the custodians in Gilbert, Arizona have thus far been unable or unwilling to produce those documents for me. And you're here to talk about raising the price significantly, I hear tonight, so that's funny. You hold me and everyone else to such a high standard that if we don't fall in line and play along with your decisions, you lock us in a cage. If we rightfully resist an unethical detainment, you will use any means necessary to force our compliance, up to and including ending someone's life. Yet, you refuse to hold yourselves to the same standard. Proof of negligence gets swept under the rug and disappears, and any questions asking why get ignored. I know the perks of the job up there make it difficult to challenge the status quo, but I just wish some of you mayors and council members across the country would peek your head out of your safety bubbles and notice what's happening around you. The gap between the people and the politicians gets bigger and more insulting every single day. If our society collapses, it will be directly your fault, and your grandchildren are going to know that it was your fault. How would you feel if you were responsible for the next civil war? You've probably never even thought about that from your comfortable positions, but I assure you that that is the logical conclusion when you have a government that holds secret meetings and has secret courts, a government that won't even let us speak freely in our own building, a government that refuses to produce records of its own actions in a timely manner, and a government that doesn't believe the people are their boss. You don't believe that. I'm not saying that you not getting me records is going to cause a civil war. I'm saying that you have no idea which straw it will be that will break the camel's back. If you think my feelings and my opinions represent a minority, then you have your head buried too far in the sand. I don't expect any of you up there to solve all of society's problems. I just want you to start taking freedom seriously. And you can start doing that by respecting the freedom of information and producing public records in a reasonable amount of time. Once you are capable of performing this most basic task efficiently, then people like me will be able to more effectively expose the problems inside our government so we can work to correct it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jim. Next, next up is James Arthur. Following James is Terry Natty.
Hello. My name is James. I've lived in downtown Gilbert for over 35 years. I'm here to talk also about your proposal to increase the price of public records requests. State law ARS 9-499.15 requires you to take multiple steps when assessing an increased fee, as you know. Specifically, you must prepare a written report or data that supports the increased fee. You have not done this. The closest you have come was when Chief Michael Solberg wrote a barely over one-page communication, not to the people of Gilbert, but to the mayor and council. The communication notes the fee is "in order to recover the costs, including all personnel and equipment costs and any relevant costs that will be incurred by the Town of Gilbert to process, including reviewing, transmitting, making a copy of, and as necessary, redacting a video recording. Public records requests for law enforcement video recordings." If you're not paying attention, that's one long sentence, but it is only one sentence. There is, excuse me, it does not come close to being a report that supports the increase. It has no data, and it falls very short of the spirit of the state law, which is to make sure the increases are supported. One way to support this increase would be to report the number of records requests handled last year, the average price per request, the amount of overtime paid out for such work, et cetera. If you can't answer these questions, you may be violating state law, and you do not deserve to even put this to a vote. Assuming that you'll argue the one sentence from the chief is the report, there are many other reasons why this is a bad idea. In the last few years, here's just some of the things that we've accomplished. We heard more earlier. Number four safest city in America, number one best city for early retirement, number six best city to raise a family. Some of those are in the nation. Our successes are really hard to square with you asking us for more money for our own records. It's hard to square with the police department that spent over $1 million on the bike squad alone this year, and spent over $22.5 million on patrol services. Asking for more money for our public, excuse me, asking for more money for our pub, for our public records speaks to poor leadership and poor budget management. A public-minded council, one that uses funds effectively, would instead be voting here tonight to make public records cheaper. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Next up is Terry Natty, and following Terry is Tommy Lyons.
Good evening. My name is Terry Natty, and I live in a county island within the Gilbert Planning area. I'm going to speak to an article that was brought to my attention regarding Ms. Dana Birchman, who is the Gilbert Chief Digital Officer. It's a lovely Q and A article, but it was the last two paragraphs that really got my attention, which read, "Let's go 10 years from now. What does a decade from now look like for you? I see my department evolving. I've gone from everything, from Office of Communications to Office of Digital Government to Office of Civic Engagement. Let other people come in. Invite them in and let them tell you what they think that you're doing. Not the people that show up at council meetings, or, as I say, the pitchfork people that have a grievance, but the average person who's busy living their lives. What do they really think? Because they do care a lot about these issues, whether it's parks or their school in the future. We know that everyone is passionate about the same things, but we often don't create spaces," which is wonderful and lovely. But I really have an issue with the pitchfork people. Words have meaning. Words have power. I often tell my scouts that, scouts that were up here tonight, I'm affiliated with that group, my son, my employees, words have meaning, words have power. Pretty sure that she didn't mean "fork 'em devils." That kind of pitchfork? I am an ASU alum, by the way. Pretty sure she wasn't talking about our farm roots with American Gothic, not that pitchfork, but I did run that pitchfork this weekend as well. Pretty sure she was talking about angry mob pitchfork with the torches and stuff. Really, I don't like to take offense to words, because that seems silly to me, but you all have this, like, track record of having awesome staff that I've told you is absolutely liars, manipulative, and now condescending, to add to that, which is great. So, on the, the subject of words have power, on the Okatiyo widening, the words that I'm going to mention are a case of first impression. And I'm really looking forward to how that works out, because as far as I can see, this David versus Goliath, I got a lot of people backing David.
Thank you, Terry. Next up is Tommy Lyons.
Hello. My name is Tommy Lyons, a resident of Gilbert. I was here in the beginning of August to speak of a concern with a traffic violation of people going the wrong way through a one-way driveway off of Pickos by Val Vista. And I just wanted to come by and say thank you to the council for not only hearing my complaint, but actually listening to me and having it addressed through the appropriate channels. I don't know all the aspects that are involved with it, whether, how many different departments were involved, or the police specifically, but... Because they do care a lot about these issues, whether it's parks or their school in the future. We know that everyone is passionate about the same things, but we often don't create spaces," which is wonderful and lovely. But I really have an issue with the pitchfork people. Words have meaning. Words have power. I often tell my scouts that, scouts that were up here tonight, I'm affiliated with that group, my son, my employees, words have meaning, words have power. Pretty sure that she didn't mean "fork 'em devils." That kind of pitchfork? I am an ASU alum, by the way. Pretty sure she wasn't talking about our farm roots with American Gothic, not that pitchfork, but I did run that pitchfork this weekend as well. Pretty sure she was talking about angry mob pitchfork with the torches and stuff. Really, I don't like to take offense to words, because that seems silly to me, but you all have this, like, track record of having awesome staff that I've told you is absolutely liars, manipulative, and now condescending to add to that, which is great. So, on the subject of words have power, on the Okatiyo widening, the words that I'm going to mention are a case of first impression, and I'm really looking forward to how that works out, because as far as I can see, this David versus Goliath, I got a lot of people backing David.
Thank you, Teri. Next up is Tommy Lyons.
My name is Tommy Lyons, a resident of Gilbert. I was here in the beginning of August to speak of a concern with a traffic violation of people going the wrong way through a one-way driveway off of Pickos by Val Vista, and I just wanted to come by and say thank you to the council for not only hearing my complaint, but actually listening to me and having it addressed through the appropriate channels. I don't know all the aspects that are involved with it, whether, how many different departments were involved, or the police specifically, but I'm very happy to say that in just six weeks, I actually implemented not one, but all of my recommendations, just short of the one-way severe spike strips. But it was a lot to have my voice seemingly go falling on deaf earwears through multiple attempts, and it was this council that did have something come of it. So, I want to say to my fellow residents here today that I cannot, I know that different issues have different complications and length of time, so I cannot speak to how fast things are resolved, but that if you do have a concern or issue, to bring it to the council, that you are heard, and that one voice can make a difference, and again, thank you.
Thank you very much, Tommy. Any comments from council? No, thank you. Mayor, then I'll turn it back.
And thank you, Vice Mayor. Moving on to our consent calendar, I turn it right back over to you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. On our consent agenda today, we will be pulling item 22, Councilmember Torgerson. We have a note that item 31 was pulled from the consent agenda. In item 38, there was a correction in the dollar amount in 38B for $100,000. With that, I would like to make a motion to approve items 6 through 21, 23 through 30, 32 through 44 with those corrections.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kerpowsky. Motion passes 7-0. Onto item 22?
Yeah. Vice Mayor. Mayor, item 22, Councilmember Torgerson requested that to be pulled. Did you want a staff report?
Okay. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor, if I could ask Susanna Strubel?
Excuse me, this is the first time I've standing in front of you for a while, so thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and council members. Tonight, we have before you the GMP for moving forward with construction for the STO 99 Project Okatiyo Road. We're moving forward with that. It will include all of the road right-of-way enhancements, as well as the road itself, and sewer line as well, that will be improved with this project in moving forward. In addition to that, we have a couple of change orders that are moving forward on this project as well. Sorry, I'm going to grab my notes here. The change orders that we have before you will be, one, that is the increase for CM Services. This project has taken us quite some time to get to this point in construction. The work that we're looking at right now is to finish the construction. We are estimating about a three-year timeframe to complete that. Work will begin at this point in time around November 10th with some survey, and then moving into construction a little bit within probably eight-week timeframe into construction on the right-of-way clearance that we need to do as we have moved forward with the design and the property acquisition. We also will have a change order to our design group, which was their efforts that was necessary to support us as we were moving through the design and the longevity of that design, as well as the acquisition of the property. We also have a professional construction, or consulting services contract in front of you tonight with Energy Construction, which is allowing us to do some quality assurance and quality control with geotechnical testing to make sure that we're meeting the compaction requirements, et cetera, on the project as it moves forward. And I'm open for any questions after that.
Thanks, Susanna. Councilmember Torgerson?
I am curious, how far over or under budget is this and the property acquisition associated with it?
Great question. I don't know that I have that answer right on top of it, but we have been negotiating it through. We are asking for a contingency tonight of about $11 million. That contingency includes bringing some money that is programmed for next year to do the sewer, which is about $5 million. The other $6 million, that's the contingency, which would be an increase in that overall budget for the project, which includes the construction and the right-of-way acquisition. That is really just escalation from the timeframe of when we estimated this project to where we are today.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Councilmember Bonjivani?
Thank you, Mayor. Suzanne, change order C on here for $812,000. Can you explain, what does that entail?
What that basically entails is for the contractor to move, or not the contractor, our professional services contract with a firm that does construction management of the project. They have been with us from the beginning of the project during design to make sure that things were being done in accordance with the expectations of the project. They've also supported the discussions with the contractor, as well as the designer and the property owners as we went through there. This $800,000 that you see right here will be taking us through three years of construction for them to oversee that construction as it goes forward.
Did they miss the mark to begin with, or are we asking them to do more things?
We're asking them to do a few more things. We did, it was really, we estimated a shorter time window for the actual construction. The original estimate was based off of that shorter timeframe. We now are seeing that that's really a three-year-long window that we're going to have to go through to do this. We probably estimated closer to about a year, year and a half initially with that, and so we are really increasing it from that perspective.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions for Susanna? Councilmember Anderson?
Suzanne, our neighboring communities experiencing the same type of inflation issues that this reflects. I'm assuming that's what we're talking about, is inflation in time, which is really costing us a lot of money.
Yeah. That really is what we're seeing throughout the industry right now on almost every one of our CIP projects. We have sat on several panels along with other adjacent communities throughout the state, as well as just immediately here in the East Valley, that have also basically indicated they're seeing very, very similar in these cost increases, and somewhere between 30 to 45% is what we've seen in the last one to two years.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Susanna? Unfortunately, that's a common theme right now in every committee that I sit on. Would anyone like to make a motion on this item, or more discussion? Vice Mayor?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor. Do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Buckley. Motion passes 7-0. Thanks, Susanna.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next portion of our agenda, thanks Vice Mayor for handling consent. Moving on to the public hearing portion of our agenda, items will be heard at one public hearing, at which time anyone wishing to comment on the public hearing item may do so. We have three liquor licenses, an annexation, and a general plan zoning item on our public hearing agenda. Would anyone like, I'll open the public hearing, would anyone like a separate presentation on any of these?
Mayor, I'd just like a staff report on 48, 49.
On the GP zoning?
Mm-hmm.
And the annexation? Okay, then I will go ahead and close the public meeting and entertain a motion for items 45, 46, and 47, the three liquor licenses. Moved by Councilmember Torgerson. Anyone else would like a second? Second by Councilmember Buckley. Mine didn't go through, sorry. My screen is different. And motion passes 7-0. Moving on to the next two items on our agenda, opening the public hearing, annexation A22-02, and staff, if we could have a short presentation on that item, and moving right into GP 2211 and Z2210. Hi.
Mayor Peterson, members of the council, good evening. If you don't mind, I'll just present these three cases all at once.
That would be perfect.
Okay, so, the Bellistoria Project is, first slide is, the location of the project is located at the northwest corner of Power and Williamsfield Roads. You can see that highlighted on the screen in front of you, and I've got on this aerial map some context of the surrounding properties in the area. Single-family, Fincher Fields to the northwest, you've got some existing multifamily to the west as well, and then some more single-family to the southwest, and commercial to the south. And to the north, you have some business park and some, a little bit of commercial zoning. So I just wanted to show you this graphic so you can get a little context of what uses are surrounding this project area. So as far as the requests are concerned, as you've already stated, there's an annexation on 74, about 74 acres, a general plan amendment for only about 11.6 acres of the project, and then a PAD rezone with a few deviations on the remaining, about 73 acres. And you'll notice in your report, as you probably read through these documents, there's a lot of, where the acreages go up and down, it's different for the rezone than it is the PAD, than the general plan and the annexation. That's because the boundaries are different, because there's some existing zoning already along Power Road and some along Williamsfield Road, so that's why there's a bunch of differences in the acreages. But overall, as far as the annexation is concerned, it's a little over 74 acres, excuse me. The blank petition was filed in May of this past year. We have received the signature from the property owner already, and on June 6th, I brought this annexation item before you in the first hearing, and only input was required at that time, and there was no motion. So I just wanted to show you this annexation exhibit really quickly, bringing this project in from Maricopa County. Existing general plan, I really like this exhibit because it shows, it breaks down and shows you very, in a very simple manner, of all the general plan designations that currently exist on the site. So you can see, there's about four and a half acres of general commercial up in the northeast corner, and then the large swath of residential 14 to 25 dwelling units per acre in the middle, and then about 19 acres or so of general commercial along Power and Williamsfield Roads. So what the applicant is proposing to do with this general plan amendment is that piece up in the northeast corner that's general commercial, they're proposing to change that to multifamily, or not multifamily, excuse me, residential 14 to 25 dwelling units per acre. And then you can see it kind of gets a little funky as you get closer to the south part of the site, and like I stated earlier, it's only about 11 and a half acres of the general plan amendment change. Thank you. So you have a portion of this, I'll go back, that red portion, that west portion of the red, about six acres of that is being changed from general commercial to, oops, excuse me, to residential 14 to 25. And then you have these little teeny pieces, a little .19 acre piece, and then .03 that are changing as well. Don't ask me why, that's just the way they drew the boundaries and those needed to change. And then there's a little sliver right at the intersection, close to the intersection of Power and Williamsfield Road, that we found out has never been a general planned, so we're going to general plan it. Don't know how that happened, but it did. So we're fixing it. So that's basically the general plan. So it's only about 11 and a half acres. As far as existing zoning on the site is county rural 43 zoning, and we're proposing to change that, I know this one's not the beautiful color exhibit, but we're proposing to change that to, you can see the multifamily medium, about 13 acres along Power and Williamsfield, or Power Road, excuse me, for a multifamily project, and then at the corner of Power and Williamsfield is general commercial, which that's just shrinking the original general commercial. And then, of course, multifamily medium along Power Road, or excuse me, Williamsfield Road. And then towards the north half of the project, there's some single-family attached and detached, which is very similar to some of the developments you see in the area already that are to the west and Cooley Station. So the proposed development plan, here's the black and white version, but I like to reference the pretty picture, so I'm going to show you the pretty picture next. This is a lot easier to kind of digest and understand, excuse me, this, what's happening in this proposed development plan. So the project, I've got something in my throat, excuse me, is about 73 acres, that's the portion that's being rezoned, 73 acres. About 60 acres of residential, and I've already talked about the single-family portion, and then the multifamily portions. And all of that residential total is about 14.3 dwelling units per acre for the whole entire project. But if you break it down a little bit, the multifamily pieces are about 20 acres, each multifamily, 28 dwelling units per acre for each multifamily piece, and then the residential towards the back, the single-family's about a little over seven dwelling units per acre. But we obviously averaged that all out, we took the density of the whole project, or the acreage of the whole project, and came up with that 14 dwelling units per acre as a whole. So there's 28 acres of multifamily in total with 628 units, and I wanted to point out that there is a typo in my staff report that says like 820 something units, I just mixed up the numbers, it looks like, but that's actually 628 units of multifamily. And then there's 32 acres of single-family, which consists of 238 lots, and the lot sizes vary on those, but they're about, some of them are about 47 feet wide, the lot sizes, but those will be finalized exactly when they come in for preliminary plating, but there's various lot sizes in that, SFA and SFD portions. And then you have 13 acres of commercial on the corner at Power and Williamsfield, which equates to about 100,000 square feet of commercial space, and shops and things along the streets, along the roadways, along Power and Williamsfield, and then a little village center kind of towards the west side of the project. But we worked really hard with the applicant to try and place all of the buildings along the streets, along Power and Williamsfield, to create a more neo-traditional type of walkable, pedestrian-friendly, streetscape environment. And in addition to that, the multifamily projects, even though they are kind of more traditional multifamily, we did work hard with the applicant to place those buildings up along the roadway frontages to create that pedestrian-friendly environment that is more prevalent in Cooley Station. All of those units, the residential units for the apartments will have, or a majority of them will have access straight from the apartment unit on the ground floor out to each roadway. And the commercial will also have access from the street straight to the building as well. So here's some site renderings I just wanted to show you. This is kind of the view looking at the kind of the corner of Power and Williamsfield, and you can see these are the commercial buildings. Right at the corner, you can see this nice, obviously, this is kind of, it's not finalized, and it's not to scale. So this is kind of the view of what it could look like from the Power and Williamsfield intersection. And then here's another view on Williamsfield Road, looking at the commercial, and you can see this really cool kind of village center that the applicant has created, and you can see the integration between the multifamily and the village center kind of commercial area, which will have a kind of a plaza for, and have some amenities in that plaza. So we worked really hard with the applicant to create a high level of integration between the multifamily and the commercial, to kind of maintain that Cooley Station, even though this is not in Cooley Station, but that gateway character area vibe here that we're trying to create. And then this is the street, Haskell Street, that kind of continues on, it goes through Cooley Station and continues through this project, and you can see the relationship between the apartments and the street, and then the single-family on the north side in the street as well, which there will be parking along that street, which is very similar, which is similar to what is in Cooley Station. that street, which is very similar, which is similar to what is in Cooley Station to the west. So as far as the deviations are concerned, there's a few deviations in the commercial zoning district. They want to go from 25 down to 20 feet for the building setbacks along Power Road, for the landscaping and the building setbacks. And then at the arterial corner intersection, which is normally 50 by 250, they want to go to 20, 20 feet wide, but they're still going to have a big plaza in between the buildings, so staff felt that that was appropriate. And then for SFD, lot sizes will decrease, they're proposing a 200 square foot decrease in lot size, and then also lot coverage up to 52 percent from 50 percent. And then in SFA, and they're only requesting one deviation in the SFA zoning district, separation between buildings to decrease that by five feet. So that's basically the deviations which staff is supportive of. Now, I did want to make note that the buildings in the residential, the multifamily portion, I'll go back to this table right, oh, I don't have the MFM table, because it's in your staff report, because it's not a deviation. But in the MFM table in your staff report, you'll notice that building heights are allowed, are up to 56 feet in this area, because they're within a vertical overlay district, which allows buildings to go taller. So, and also in that, in that report, you'll notice, and you may have caught this, but I put, in the staff report, I showed that there was a deviation in MFM for landscape setback from 20 to 30 feet, which, that's a typo. They're not proposing any deviations for the multifamily medium, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention. So that is my presentation. Oh, sorry, public notification participation, I forgot, I apologize. We held, the applicant held two neighborhood meetings, one that was required, and that was on January 27th. There were a few people, residents, who showed up, and they just had some general concerns, or not general concerns, but questions about the grocery store, or a grocery store, if there's one provided, and questions about the two, if two-story homes will be proposed, they were all in support. And then also, the applicant held another neighborhood meeting that wasn't required, but they did it out of their own free will, and they had four surrounding property owners attend, and they were all in support. But since the writing of the staff reports, town staff has not received one phone call from surrounding residents throughout the whole process. So as a result, staff recommends that you approve the annexation, the minor general plan amendment, and the rezone, subject to all of the conditions. And if you have any questions, I'm available. I believe Ralph Pugh, the applicant's here tonight, and he may have a short presentation if you wish to allow him to do that. But that's it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Keith. Does anyone have any questions for Keith at this time? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Keith, thank you so much for your presentation. I always like to be able to have this public view of the, these types of cases that come before us. You know, there's a lot of history in this piece of land, and even though it wasn't part of Gilbert at the time, Mr. DeBello had a Cosmos Restaurant there on the corner, and it was the go-to place, and he, just a wonderful family. And I'm glad to see them come in with such a nice project. There was a lot of concern from the family. I know when Power Road was divided there many years ago, and I think that this fits very well for that entrance into Gilbert. In saying that, I really want to make sure that it is showcased as an entrance into Gilbert. People flying in to the airport there, that's going to be one of the first things they see when they come out of the airport. So hopefully, you will be able to work with the applicant to make sure that is something of a showcase for us and the project. I don't have any questions of the applicant or for you, I just wanted to make those few comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I wanted to mention that, Keith, you mentioned that you hadn't heard from any of the public. I have no online public comments, and we have no slips from anyone in the public wishing to speak on this item tonight. Does anyone, would anyone like to have a presentation from the developer, or are we good, the zoning attorney? Councilmember Anderson?
You can't let Ralph get away without making a presentation.
But if you bring him down, you realize it could be long. I'm just pointing that out.
That's up to him.
Even longer than mine?
We would be happy to have Mr. Pugh come down and keep it to a Reader's Digest version, please, Mr. Pugh. It sounds like we don't have a lot of concerns.
Is that better? Thank you, Mayor. It'll be shorter than Reader's Digest. Ralph Pugh here tonight on behalf of Francesca and Vince Muscarello, who are the heirs and the managers of the business that was Cosmo DeBello, as you so aptly mention, Vice Mayor. I've always wanted to say this. At the turn of the century, this property was designated for multifamily development, medium density, and commercial. And we bring to you tonight the completion of that process, the entry to the gateway area. It's been in the town's plan that long. And thanks to the staff, we've been working on this case with them for a long time, to create all the connections that you see. We urge your support and approval, but it has been since the turn of the century. Thank you, Mayor. We urge your support.
Thanks, Ralph. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Pugh? Councilmember Buckley?
I don't really have any questions. I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Newsom, who answered all my questions to save Ralph all this time today.
Thank you. Thanks for that, Councilmember. Okay, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the dais for motion, they'll have to be done separately, one for the annexation, one for the GP, and one for the zoning. Would anyone like to tackle them? To approve the annexation?
Yes.
So we have a motion to approve the annexation by Councilmember Buckley. Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Bon Giovanni. Please vote. The annexation passes seven zero. Now, if I could have a motion for the GP 22-11.
Mayor, do we have to do each of those separate?
I would do each of them separately, please.
I'll make a motion to approve general plan GP 2211.
Can I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Tilke, a second by Councilmember Anderson. Please vote. And that passes seven zero. Now, moving on to the zoning, would someone like to tackle Z22-10?
Mayor, I'll do that.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve zoning case Z22-10.
Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Tilke, seconded by Councilmember Bon Giovanni. Please vote. Motion passes seven zero. I think that's the shortest presentation I've ever seen from you, Mr. Pugh, and I appreciate it. Have a great evening. Moving on to our administrative items, boards, commissions, and committees, do we have any reports from council liaisons for any of these items? Oh, Councilmember Kropowski.
I just want to make note that the Public Works Advisory Board is off to a great start. They've been meeting every two weeks for the past couple of months. They're working on some important topics related to our water and wastewater rates, which we will hear at our fall retreat, but just wanted to thank you for your efforts and support of that board. And for the public, those are published on the website, and the next one is on Monday.
Thank you for that. Any other comments from liaisons? Moving on to policy items, item number 51, policy item 2012-05, consider approval of amendment to the council policy number 2012-05 regarding electronic equipment and services policy for elected and appointed officials and members of boards, commissions, and committees. Does anybody require a presentation on this? No? Would anyone like to, does anyone have any comments on this? Seeing none, would anyone like to make a motion on this? Move to approve? Councilmember Torgeson moves to approve. Can I have a second? I have a second by Councilmember Buckley. Please vote. And that motion passes seven zero. Moving on to communications, report from the town manager on current events.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Couple of items tonight. First, I want to recognize a Parks and Recreation longtime volunteer, Theona Vivio. She was recently named Volunteer of the Year by the Arizona Parks and Recreation Association in ABC 15, aired a segment yesterday on our award in service. The owner volunteers at the Riparian Preserve and Gilbert Community Center, and has been a vital team member for caring for our Gilbert community over many, many years. Also wanted to, once again, congratulate and thank all of our MPV winners for embodying the town's value and everything they do, and the recognition of that by their peers. Also, additional appreciation to Leah Reinheimer for the NAMI program that's in its 10th year for the town. It's been incredibly enriching for us as an organization, hopefully for them as well, and they have done some really critical and vital projects for that, for which we're very grateful. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Patrick. Moving on to report from the council on current events. Anybody have, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to remind everyone that this October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and to take a moment just to acknowledge all of the loved ones that have survived breast cancer, and to remind those that we do love to have an annual mammogram. Thank you, Mayor.
That's a great reminder, Vice Mayor. Lost my own mother to breast cancer. Does anyone have any updates from council members on current events? Seeing none? I have a couple. I have, and I want to just point out, thank you for everybody sitting through the presentations and proclamations tonight. When you only have one meeting in a month, and this is our only meeting for October, we get backed up, and we have everything to present on one evening. So I have a couple of updates, too. I wanted to, from the faith summit that we held last week, I wanted to thank Chief Michael Solberg and Chief Rob Duggan for joining me on a panel, appreciate your time and your insight into the community, and then Pastor Eric Jones for co-moderating with me, Pastor Tim Thompson, Noah Thompson, Jared Everton, Amy Keller, and Rabbi Shimmy for praying over our public safety, our town, our youth, our country, and Israel. A quote by Pastor Thompson that day that resonated with the group was, "The only thing necessary for the triumph of evil is for good men to do nothing." I also wanted to point out that the, on Thursday, October 26th, from 5:30 to 7:30 at 75 East Civic Center Drive, which is the Gilbert Police Station across the street, please join us for Gilbert's inaugural Domestic Violence Awareness Night, an evening dedicated to bringing awareness to the societal impacts of domestic violence. The event will feature a series of speakers, including stories from a domestic violence survivor, a ribbon-tying ceremony, educational materials and resources from local organizations, and local food trucks. On Friday, October 27th, at 4:00 p.m., join us at the Gilbert Fire Station 2, located at 2855 East Guadalupe Road, for the unveiling of Arizona's first electric fire truck during a community push-in ceremony. If you haven't attended one of these ceremonies before, it is a really fun ceremony to bring your kids and grandkids to. The fire department hoses down the fire engine, and we then push the fire engine into the station, and we all get cloths to wipe the engine down. And it's pretty, Chief's down there shaking his head, it's a pretty fun event to be able to do. And I have to say that I was leery to even bring this event up tonight, because I've been disappointed with the reaction that I've seen online about this electric fire engine. I'm disappointed that a topic like electric vehicles has become so divisive within the public when not only Gilbertonians, but so many people around the world are really embracing electric vehicles. And it's, we're not telling you, you have to. I don't have one, I'm not promoting them in any way, but I think it's become a very popular item, and I think it's something that's potentially here to stay. And I'll tell you, because I'm on the Transportation Policy Committee, I know that when gas-engine vehicles came out, gas stations were picketed, because people didn't want gas stations in their neighborhoods, and in their towns, and in their cities. So let's find a way to embrace the options and the right that we have to have those options, whether it's in our town, or this county, or this state, or this country. Okay, I'll jump off my soapbox. Remind you all that student government applications are open for our high school kids right now. They get an opportunity to come in and shadow the employees of the town, and most people, if you ask them who works for the town of Gilbert, they'll say police officers, firefighters, and garbage truck drivers. There are a lot of people that help run this town on a daily basis, and this gives our teens an opportunity to come in and shadow those folks, and find out what the opportunities are for them to come in and have shoot-your-careers here in their own community, or maybe a community that's surrounding us. So look for that at gilbertazie.gov/sgd for Student Government Day. And Halloween is next Tuesday. I just want to say have fun and be safe. And drivers, please drive with care and caution, and watch for trick-or-treaters. Yes. Oh, yes. Councilmember Kropowski, would you like to make a comment?
Yes, we have one more announcement to make, and that, as a liaison to Gilbert Sister Cities, I wanted to mention that our student ambassador program is open, and this is an extremely valuable program for the students and for the community. More information can be found at gilbertsisterscities.com. The applications are due on October 30th, and there's an application information and etiquette clinic this Thursday, October 26th, at 7:00 p.m. at Sonoma Ranch Elementary. So if you have a junior in high school, attending any high school in Gilbert, or if you're a resident of Gilbert, you can apply to this program. And four amazing students get selected to go on a really enriching trip next summer. But those applications are open, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I meant to add it to my notes, and it slipped my mind, so I appreciate that. One more thing before I forget, Councilmember Anderson's birthday was last week, so we have a card for you, sir, and we have donuts in the back room. So everybody grab a donut. And bottom of the eighth, the Diamondbacks are up 4 to 2. Meeting adjourned.